Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals Hearing July 11th, 2024. This is a hybrid meeting being held in person here at Rose Baker Senior Center, Manny Lewis Street in Gloucester, and it's being held on Zoom. The Zoom link is 876-8638-2756. Okay, for the record, we have an attendance, myself, Joseph Parisi, Catherine Schlichty, Ron Wilson, and Michael Nyman, and I declare we have a quorum. Our first continued application is the petition of Kristin Eisenoff, seeking a special permit under 1.9 to alter, expand, or nonconforming structure, variances under 1.7 and 3.2.1 for side yard setbacks at 81 Dennison Street. Now, we had opened this hearing previously on the 13th, and we had taken public testimony. We did leave that open and recognize Attorney Favazza.
Just a quick comment. I think we first decided that a variance was not needed, that only a special permit was needed.
For what it's worth, that was my analysis also. All right, let me join as a panelist. Good evening for the record. My name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street in Gloucester. I'm going to share my screen here. Long slideshow, my apologies. I'm here on behalf of Kristin Eisenoff. She's here tonight with her family. Behind me, if there's any questions that I can't answer, I will have one of them help me out, but hopefully we can kind of pick up where they left off a month ago. And so just as a refresher, this is an existing, I think you call it a two-family now. I think it was probably permitted initially under the old defunct-in-law. It functions as a single with an ADU. It's categorized by the assessors as a family duplex, which I believe is how they used to grab the old singles with an in-law. Now it would either be a two-family or an ADU. Either way, they're not proposing to change any of the use. They're just simply looking to fill in this space of the breezeway. We're in the R20 district. There are encroachments into the right-side yard setback area, and we are operating within that area. And then, as you guys know, the last meeting was continued as there was some concern about refreshed plans that had been submitted close to meeting time and some concerns raised by the neighbor. The only permit I believe you need to grant is a special permit to alter and expand nonconforming structure. No 243. Per usual, I have all the plans. This is a good plan to pause on. So the brief history, which you may have been told last time, is that initially it was a standalone small house toward the street and a large barn toward the water. And many years ago, they connected the two via a breezeway, made it one building, moved many of the living quarters into the barn, and then turned the initial house into that sort of in-law ADU second unit. By this plan, you can see the two areas that are new. The staircase exterior exists, but it's not to code, so it's getting eight inches wider to be brought up to code. Otherwise, that other rectangle, as you can see, is filling in a gap next to the existing breezeway. There's a lot on the satellite photo, some quick pictures. So this is from the other side. The work is being done to the rear of this picture. This is the actual area being filled in. So again, we are under GZO 243. Looking for a finding that this will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what presently exists. We have an existing nonconforming structure that is about 15.5 feet into the setback area. It'll go to 16.25 feet. Again, that's due to the exterior stairs coming up to code. Otherwise, the fill-in, which is about 84 square feet, is not getting any closer to the side property line than what exists. And again, there is no change in use. This is going to remain the family duplex as it is currently. Just to be clear, that front unit has living area, sleeping area, bathing facilities, and a full kitchen. And in fact, the only real change is that what is currently three kind of small bedrooms in that front unit is going down to two more reasonably sized. So in fact, there's a decrease in number of bedrooms in this house. So if anyone's concerned about intensity of use, arguably, it's a less intense use because one bedroom is being eliminated despite being an expansion of the footprint. Just more photos in case anyone gets a chance to get out there. If there's any questions, like we can flip back into these. Of note, you'll see on this picture to the left, as you look at it, that is the property line dividing this property from the neighbor that spoke at the last meeting. As you can see, there's a dense vegetated border between the two properties. And so some of those concerns we heard about, as I watched the recording, were about change in plans. And so I want to be clear that the change in plans, to begin with, weren't actually changing what was being proposed. It was dialing in and kind of removing some potential options. It's dialing into a committed, this is the scheme we're going with. The change in height was more a matter of measuring it correctly from average grade, not from ground level. So again, you're looking at about a 10-inch practical increase in roof height, and that's just because rafters have to be replaced, and new rafters are going to be bigger to meet modern code. There's concerns about change of use. As I stated tonight, there is no change of use. Basically, the ADU unit isn't great functionality. By bumping this breezeway out, all of a sudden, the kitchen can be better separated. It'll just make a lot more sense and be an easier unit. Kristin's mother lives with them currently in that unit, and they've decided she's earned an upgrade. And so they'd like to get her a little more comfortable situation up there. So again, here's the existing plan. You can sort of see in the, where my mouse is floating around. This is the shared kind of kitchen area now. The kitchen sink is down here. There's also some laundry facilities in that room, and you know, the oven and that sort of stuff. And it's just going to move into a more practical space. So again, the roof line's not really changing. It's going up 10 inches for code. And that is why we're at 13.7 above average grade now, and it goes to 14.5 above average grade. And again, want to point out a building height of 14.5. I don't come here very often talking about a building that's 14.5 with concerns of height, but I want to make sure we tackled it. And then, as far as intensity of use, like I said, the bedroom count's going down. On that side yard, there's not much you can really do. And as far as relative to the neighbor, it's already really well bordered. And this section is, if anyone had a chance to get out there, is really densely planted between the two. But that's the border as you look down from the street. That's just a little closer picture. A shot of the little gap is being filled in. And then one of these, when I get to it. This is me, I stood with my back against the siding, looking straight at the neighbor's house. You can see actually the either side of the gap, the left and to the right. And that's what this gap faces. You know, and I'm six feet tall, and my camera's in front of my face, so the camera's probably about five and a half feet up, taking that photo. And there's concern about the venting. Again, the vents are already on that side of the house, and if anything, this actually moves the vents more interior. So again, the vent's already there. It's going to get moved, but it's not something new happening to the degree that the board was concerned about that also. So again, we're just looking for a special permit to alter and expand nonconforming structure. I do not think that this filling in of the unit is going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what presently exists, and I would ask for that relief. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, as we remember, we had opened and heard testimony. We're going to do that again because we had questioned that we had the most up-to-date plans in a timely manner. So we'll allow public testimony. When we take public testimony, the procedure is, first, there'll be people speaking in favor, and then there'll be people speaking in opposition. If you're in the hall, you come up to the microphone. First thing, give us your name and address so that we can record that for the record, and then go ahead and begin speaking. If you're on your device, you press your raise hand button, and we will recognize that and bring you in from Zoom. Or if you're on a phone, you dial *9. So that'll be our process tonight. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor, raise your hand or come forward.
Hi there. My name is Dan LeBlanc. I'm good friends with them. I'm also going to be doing the work with my contractor.
Address?
Friend. I live at 19 LeBlanc Lane, West Newbury, Mass. Totally in favor. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Oh, wait a minute, I have a hand raised. Kai Quinlan?
Hi. I spoke before.
Are you going to be speaking in opposition?
Yes.
Okay, one second. Is there anyone wishing to still speak in favor of the application?
It's okay.
Seeing none, we'll take testimony in opposition. Ms. Quinlan, you first.
You should be able to speak. You don't need to raise your hand again.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, sorry about that. I had some technical difficulties. Thank you. I would love to say that I was speaking in favor, and part of me is speaking in favor of the original plan we were presented with.
Can I have an address, please?
Yeah, this is Kai Quinlan. I'm speaking for 79 Dennison Street. We're the direct to Butters right next door. We live at the little cottage you can see in the photos, the brown shingled one. And we live at a much lower elevation. And that's part of the concern is, you know, this structure is nonconforming, and it's always been an in-law unit. It's always been used that way, and that's always been great. But we live at a much, much lower elevation, four to six feet lower. I wrote in via email, and I included some photos as well. And what's not shown on the plans or in the photos shared today is the relative elevation between the two buildings. So we already sit low enough that that little section that right now has a lower roof gives some really nice relief for privacy and for gardens. And so the plan that we were told about from our neighbors was, and we were told this verbally and in writing and emails, that they were never going to raise the roof height. And we were ready to come out and support, you know, the renovation with minor caveats for waste pipes that currently exist that you can see in the photos that were shown today, not being relocated closer to our unit where the indentation is that they want to fill in and bump out. There's a waste pipe in there. There's a bathroom there that's, I think, proposed to be a new bathroom. So one question I had last time was, what happens to that waste pipe? And can it be relocated to the other side? Or someplace where it's not closer because it would run downhill if it were to fail? Similar with like noise questions and fumes questions, I had asked if the systems could be downdraft, and I have consulted General Contractors License in Massachusetts. Downdraft would be an appropriate way to vent a kitchen in such a small unit. If you have a big multi, you know, family home or even a big single-family home, downdraft's not quite as efficient. But for a small in-law unit, it's perfectly fine and would mean that kitchen smells wouldn't be going towards, you know, my bedroom windows or guest room windows. You know, I know that it's for Kristin's mom, and I really want to support having the place be made nicer for her. Barb is a great neighbor. And, you know, I just, I can't think about this emotionally. I have to think about it pragmatically in terms of future property value. If we were to sell, or, you know, God forbid if anything changed in Kristin and Sean's life, if they were to sell, not everyone is going to be able to make that promise. New buyers aren't going to be able to make that promise, and none of us intends to leave this little slice of paradise. But if something happened, and they did, or if Barb wasn't the person living there anymore, and suddenly this became a vacation rental unit, my understanding from having been in the unit is it's currently a two-bedroom. In the plans that we're discussing tonight, I think it shows two bedrooms plus a Murphy bed bedroom. So, you know, that accommodates more people, which is great if you're hosting grown kids or, you know, having friends visit. But if the usage were ever to change and that became a main entrance or new social spaces were on that side of the house, my concern is that would have a real impact on, you know, our privacy and enjoyment. But most of all, we have, you know, we have enjoyed, you know, we've enjoyed perennial gardens that have taken over 20 years to establish that, you know, my mom's a big gardener, previous owner was a big gardener. You don't get these sorts of gardens that define a place like this. And the new roof height, you know, we did a little light study based on the plans from November 2023, and we actually physically watched the shade line to see, you know, where it falls. Because the setback at this nonconforming cottage is 7.7 feet from the property line. So where our hedge ends, our property goes a little bit further than that. And then, you know, you have 7.7 feet to the side of the building, not to the steps, but to the, not to the egress steps, which were put on by the previous owners without a permit, but made it a little bit safer. But 7.7 feet to the actual cottage. So it's really, really close. So that, you know, that shadow line, if you add more height and you factor in the fact that we're already four to six feet lower towards sea level than their house, you know, you start to really change the experience of our outdoor space and our gardens. And like, we have food we grow to eat in a raised garden bed, you know, peonies and poppies and all those things that may not bloom anymore. I did write a letter to the board, and I know it was only submitted about 56 hours prior, but I detail some of those things in the letter. And I'm going to revisit that now just to make sure I don't leave anything out because I know it's being presented as not a detriment, but a 12-foot roof height for an existing cottage is sort of the precedent that was set for, you know, what's an acceptable roof height. And I think it was built sensitively when it was all one family, you know, the house and barn. Donna, who owned the house when we bought ours, her mother lived next door. You know, she lived and died in our house. And, you know, I think they did some things intentionally to sort of respect the privacy between the places and to not have a roof towering above. You know, this higher roof would change our views out all our windows. I asked a lot of questions at the last meeting that didn't get answered on this one, on this set of plans. They're, you know, they look the same as when they were handed out last meeting. And some of those questions were, what new systems are going in? Are there mini splits or compressors? You know, are those going to be within that 7.7 feet? That's all we have. What noises or fumes might those make? You know, are there options for cathedralling? Because I have talked to general contractors as well, and I don't agree from the information I've heard that the beams have to be bigger. I don't think that they had the November 2023 plans wrong. I don't think their contractor made such a big mistake. I think it's desirable to have cathedral, but it changes. It takes that whole low-down part and makes it really high and makes it tower over our place. And it doesn't have to. Are there, I think there are a lot of ways to do the renovation that still could incorporate cathedralling the front cottage without having a really high roof looming over our space and without blocking views or light from our garden or our window views. And I wonder if it can't be cathedral in the front or if it can't be where the outdoor shower is, if that can't be relocated and that part can't be where the staircase gets rerouted. I mean, that shower wasn't even put in with a permit. It was put in hastily before the place was sold to Kristin and Sean. And I'm just, I'm really trying to think of ways that still respect our privacy and that don't have us sort of dwarfed by the house next door. We have such a tiny lot. It's 0.11 acres. The house next door at 81 has 0.24 acres. And the bulk of the space and yard and sunlight and water views are on the driveway side, on the yard side, which faces Holly Street and the Cove. And there's tons of space over there. 81 has a circular driveway with, you know, two exits. Nobody else, hardly on the street, has that. Why isn't any extension that way being considered instead of the entire sort of burden of privacy loss and light loss being put on the neighbor's side? I feel like these-
I'm going to have to ask you to kind of wrap up a little. We did hear most of this last time.
Okay, I do have one last thing that, two last things. One is that the steps on the side of the house that face us that provide a second means of egress have been shown on the new plans, adding steps towards the street. They've never had them before. They were two granite steps there that the previous owners took out and replaced with the little platform and the steps towards the Cove. I'd like to ask that that area not be made into more of a main entrance or a social space by adding steps towards the street. If the usage were to change in the future, that could become a noisier area. That could become a place that people stand outside and smoke, that I would smell in my bedroom. I also would like to point out that I, you know, I sort of felt railroaded by these new plans last time at the last meeting. I've had time now to review them. And I do have more to say, but since you're asking me to wrap up, I want to ask the board what the rules are because I believe that the neighborhood has a right to know, even though it mostly affects us. I think that there's a certain due process where notification is required and where people in the neighborhood get a chance to weigh in, either in favor or against. But they get a chance to review the plans. They're supposed to have access to them. I talked to three or four neighbors. None of them had received any notification of this next meeting. None of them had any idea that there were plans submitted that were new and that were substantively different. This roof height going from 11'10" to 14-plus at the front and then 18-plus where the now much lower roof is, where the connector breezeway is, on our side, you have to add four to six feet to that 18, and that will be our experience of it. And I think that the notification to neighbors needs to be met so that other people have a chance to weigh in, and that has not happened. I'm sorry that I took so much time. And I really wish that we could discuss some compromises that would honor both the positive changes that Kristin and Sean want to make for Barb, but not entirely at our detriment. And I hope that's a conversation that we can open. I don't want this to be a thing with attorneys. We're neighbors, and we just want to have, you know, our space respected at the same time as honoring their wishes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application? You're going to raise your hand? Yep, no, who's this? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please raise your hand or come forward.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Evidently, I don't know how to operate this. Nina Quinlan, 79 Dennison Street?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'll be a lot briefer than Kai. I'm really going to try not to repeat too much, but obviously that is going to happen some. I'm hoping you got her letter. I do support everything she said in the letter about the concerns about what's being proposed and alternatives and options. But I won't go into that because you have that already. The ceiling height that Kai talks so much about, I too have really big concerns about that. In the new plan, I see it going higher, further back than on the original plan, taking part of the garage roof, I believe, and also raising that. If I'm reading them right, there's about four feet of that also being raised, which doesn't leave much that's lower. I don't, in theory, I don't mind the raised roof and everything, but this looks a little bit like cathedral ceiling. It's not like it's what's giving more space to Barb in the unit. It creates more of a feeling of space and an energy of space because the roof's higher. But to bring it all the way, almost the entirety of the house that high, I don't get the need, and I'm hoping that that wouldn't be the case because as we've already pointed out, our property is so much lower, four to six feet lower. When I sit on the side of that house now, it's not like looking at 18 feet of roof. It's 23 feet of roof that I'm looking up at. If I'm looking at both the first floor and the second floor windows, I'll just be looking at the roof because our property's so much lower. It's, and so close. It's just, it's unavoidable that we're allowed to take place. Let me just take a look here. It's just, it's going to make our property just feel extremely crowded and extremely closed in to have that much, that high roof. Let's see. I'm also concerned about any, nobody's spoken about it. I don't see it on any plan. I guess maybe it's not happening because wouldn't it have to be on the plan? But if mini splits were plopped down on that side of that house in that just seven-foot setback, we would just be hearing, it would be much better put on the other side where there's not a close neighbor because it would just be humming along basically right into our house and our bedrooms being that close. I don't know because we haven't had a chance to speak together. So without going on too much further, I just feel like I'm going to be repeating too much. But the plan, the way it's set out right now, I just feel like maybe we could come to something that would be a little less of a change and hardship and really a detriment to our property because I do think the roof height with this looming, you know, just wall so close to us, that is what, you know, I look at the second floor now, I see all pine trees. I won't, I will see a roof even from the second floor. It's just a very dramatic change that I think is going to hurt our property. I think it could be done without bringing so much height so far back on that house, maybe, you know, half of that being raised or something like that. So that's pretty much all I have, I think. Same, same concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition?
If you could just review the letter.
Oh, could I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Yeah, we're-
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I was just hoping you'll be able to review that letter which was submitted.
We do.
Okay, great. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Seeing no other people raised, we're going to close public testimony. We're going to allow Attorney Favazza for rebuttal.
I will try to be as brief as possible. So I want to start off by saying, you know, I don't want to be dismissive of the concerns. This is a beautiful neighborhood, and I can imagine, you know, that there's genuine concern about change that could be negatively impacting to property. And so I want to just quickly address some of the main thrust of the concerns. Obviously- we're talking about height. We're not talking about height for a special permit to alter and expand, right? We are under thirty feet above average grade, which means unless this building was going up another sixteen feet almost, things about view obstruction, overshadowing does not come into play and are not the standards that need to be applied. However, to the degree that there's concern that this substantial detriment to the neighborhood um standard, you know, is being triggered by this. I want to point out real quick. So again, this is, this is the area being filled in. You can see the lower roof is being brought up to, you know, where that higher roof is, and then again, another ten inches or so. And you can actually see this is a summer shot, and this was kind of midday. And so you can see as the sun swings around the summer, actually shadows start coming from seventy nine onto eighty one. And this is midday, so the shadows weren't very long, but I went and found satellite photography done in the winter. Now again, this is daytime in the winter, not evening, but shadows are longer in the winter. You can see from all the trees with no leaves that um, this is a winter shot. And when you zoom in, you can see the shadow that the current house is casting. And in this shot, again, the approximate, the, the property line's approximate, right? This is just accessory records. The shadows not even leaving the property in the winter. And you can see the gap where the current breezeway is where the shadow tucks in even further. And you can, I guess, get a rough estimation. If you just kind of connect those shadow lines from left to right, that's basically what you're looking at. Again, the, the ridge line will be ten inches higher, so you can imagine that shadow will be a degree, you know, to some degree, a little bit further out. But um, it is not going to be this towering situation. I also want to point out the position of the neighbor's house relative to this bump out, right? The neighbor's house is in front of this area we're filling in. And so concerns about being ran outside the bedroom, I think, are a misunderstanding. I mean, I say this all due respect to the neighbor. I think it may be a misunderstanding because there is no part of their house that lines up with this part of eighty one that's being filled in. So you know, again, I, I hear their concerns. If I lived over there, I would guard that place jealously, and I totally understand, you know, the reason they're so passionate about this. But what I'm trying to say to this board and to them, to the degree they're able to hear me, is that I think a lot of their concerns may be unfounded. And again, with all due respect, I don't see the kind of parade of horribles that was described actually happening. So again, the last point I have to make, unfortunately being the lawyer, is that the standard is substantial detriment to the neighborhood. So it doesn't say it can't be detrimental at all. In fact, it can be moderately detrimental and still deserve a permit. And that moderate detriment can be to the entire neighborhood and still qualify for a permit. What I'm saying here, though, is I don't think there's real detriment to anybody, certainly not substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And unless the board makes a finding to that degree, I would expect the board to please grant the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion?
I think there's an increase in my own, yes. I think there's an increase in nonconformity. Uh, to me, it's not substantially. And again, I would, with all due respect to the neighbors, I hear their concerns. Uh, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. My estimation.
That too, yeah. Um, I would agree with Michael. Um, you know, the relative to the whole length of the building, this is a relatively small infill area um that does not line up with the, a butter's home. That is going to be brought to a height of well under what our height limits are. And it's relatively modest, I think, um proposal. So while I do think it's intensifying that nonconformity, which is a building along the left side right side lot line, I don't think it's substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. So I'm gonna support the application.
Are we ready for a motion?
I can make a motion if you want.
Go ahead.
A petition of Kristen Eisenzorff seeking special permit one point nine to alter, expand, nonconforming structure, uh variance is not required. Um, at eighty one Denison Street, um I would move approval of the special permit. Um, it is um increasing the nonconformity, intensifying. It's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Move approval.
Second that.
And we have a motion made and seconded. We'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Sukti?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
I also vote yes. I agree that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, which is the standard for the special permit. I think it's a very minimal add-on to the home and it'll only be talking about twelve foot four or fourteen to fourteen foot is certainly not going to change the place. So you've heard our decision is favorable, and we'd appreciate a drop. Our next continued hearing is the petition of Brennan House seeking a special permit one point ten point one and three point one point six authorizing a maximum building height of thirty five feet for a single family home at thirty one Winthrop Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Sullivan. I'm a architect of Slate Blue Design, representing um the residents at Winthrop Avenue. And we're requesting uh variance from a height of thirty feet to thirty five feet for a new structure that's going in.
Address?
Oh, my address. Three oh, the, the firm's address is three oh nine Asbury Street in Hamilton, Massachusetts. Right now on the site is uh an existing house that um its present height is actually at, based on some field calculations, approximately uh thirty three point eight, thirty four feet in height above the mean grade. And we are asking for, to um, to raise the, the new structure to be at thirty five. Um, the new structure is essentially going in the same footprint as the existing home. And for multitude of reasons, one being because of the um, this, the topography of the site, there's ledge on the site. We felt that the, the best place to economically locate the new structure would be in the existing location. Also, the existing location um would not um be any more detrimental um than locating it elsewhere on the site to the neighbors and views and such out to the water. So that was another reason that we um locate, kept the location there. Um, we did raise the first floor floor from the present grade up slightly, being that if you looked at the original photos, the slope down from the driveway to the house is quite steep. Um, and so it makes it difficult, especially in inclement weather, especially for the, the resident, the clients who would like to age in place there. So we're, so we're raising the grade around there, but the calculations I gave you is based on the existing grade. Or that that was, that, that those calculations are based on the existing grade or, or around in that area. Um, and so we raised the floor height slightly, the infill. We also did it for um water mitigation. We have a cistern on the site so that um no additional water um is mitigated and going into the, into both the, the, it's this new river and the, and the other water. So all of those were taken into consideration to keep it in that location. And the floor, the floor heights are not extravagant. They're eight feet. Actually, the basement is at nine feet. Um, and I actually did a calculation that the, the, the elevation of the basement is actually um four foot higher than the mean grade, three or four foot higher. So we're sort of we're starting in the hole in relationship to the, to the um our restrictions on the how, the height of the house. So we are asking relief from that to the thirty five feet.
Thank you. Questions? For the record, if we could clarify the barn
Barn is not that was, so what you see is what was presented to the Conservation Commission, because there might be some work on that barn, and if that's the case, you will see us again.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. There are no other questions. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Either please come forward or raise your hand on Zoom. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? We have one on an iPad, Jim's iPad. I remind everyone, name and address, please, for us for the record.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Kim Dias with James Legakis. Uh, we live at thirty two Winthrop Ave. We are direct abutters to thirty one Winthrop Ave in Gloucester. We understand that the current structure is already above three feet of maximum code that is required. And it was our understanding that the new structure would be in the exact footprint of the current. Um, the homeowners were trying to raise the height to thirty six point thirty three, which the committee would not allow. So now they are dropping the height of the building to which is still above the code to thirty five in this uh environmentally sensitive area. So uh, we don't, are, are they trying to build more bedrooms? Are there going to be more people living there, more cars parked? The driveway is expanding for additional parking. Will this afford more traffic, exhaust noise? Is this a very small, quiet, private road? The, this increased size and height of this new home will we feel adversely affect the neighborhood character and social structure, as well as the quality of the natural environment. Which is looming over the sensitive site, which sits directly on protected wetlands. And of course, everything is still pending on the Department of Environmental Protection and the Wetlands um Protection Act, because this is looming over one of the last remaining clam beds in West Gloucester.
If I could
We just think it'll adversely affect our, our whole neighborhood with such a looming structure.
If I could clarify one thing for you.
Sure.
We, we didn't, didn't, we didn't turn down uh thirty the thirty six foot. It wasn't something we could even hear. That's why we
Oh.
stopped the hearing. It was beyond our, we can only go to thirty five at this board. So they've changed the plans to lower the roof to a lesser height so that they could stay under the thirty five feet. That's why we're back here tonight.
Yeah, I see.
Anything else?
Hi, uh Jim Legakis at uh thirty two Winthrop Ave. I heard the architect um talk about um eight foot high walls. Again, the house is not conforming. It's at over thirty three feet now. And um, you know, they're gonna try to squeeze this thing in to a thirty five, you know? If at all possible, you know, we hoped that it would stay uh at that thirty three foot level. So that's uh was our concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony. Discussion by the board? Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the question, in case anyone didn't, wasn't clear or could hear that, was so the fact that this building in its proposed location meets all the setbacks. So it's not asking for a special permit to alter and expand or to tear down and rebuild. It has that right on its own. The only issue before us is a request to be a couple of feet taller. So that's what we're testifying on tonight. And so that would be our discussion whether there was any uh, when we deal with height, we're looking at limitations on affecting views or shadowing and things like that. So hadn't heard anything yet. Yes.
Should, should the attorney have the opportunity to rebut the objections?
I just wanted to to clarify the positioning.
Yeah, so we're talking about the difference being one foot eight inches, I think, is what we're talking about, from thirty six point three three to thirty five.
Right.
We're talking about twenty inch difference.
So I want to, if you did want to say anything in rebuttal to the testimony?
Um, it's just that the um, there's no, we feel that there's no additional detriment to the neighborhood from the existing house. Essentially, the ridge line is in parallel with the existing ridge line. We are not obstructing any views. Shadows or cast would stay within the um perimeter of the site. Um, so there's really, and, and it would not be any difference in runoff or anything based on the roof shape or any of, the only thing, the difference between the present building and our new building is um in relationship to the variance is the height.
You're raising it up a little.
Raising it up. So just under two feet. Two feet if I wanted to, but I can't do that.
Okay. More discussion by the board? Thank you.
I just agree. I, I just agree. It sounded like I said I disagree and I don't. I agree. Uh, I don't think there's any obstruction of use, overshadowing of property, impairment of utilities or other impacts. I think that's all, this is the one time that we look at those kinds of things. We're constantly telling people when we're below thirty feet, I'm sorry, we can't consider that. Well, this is the time that we do. I don't, I don't see it. I don't see the twenty inches higher than the existing building. Kind of do any of that, so.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion on this unless somebody else wants to.
I can. A petition of Brennan House seeking special permit uh one point ten point one and three point one point six authorize a maximum building height, and it should say thirty five feet now, right? Home at thirty one Winthrop Ave. Uh, for the reasons stated, I would move approval of this special permit. I don't think uh that it um adding twenty inches um to the height of this house is gonna adversely affect this property. I would move
And, and I would second the motion on the basis that this does not intensity, i- increase the intensity of use by rebuilding on the same footprint.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to approve a special permit to a maximum of thirty five feet. Roll call vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Sukti?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes.
Heard our decision's favorable. Your office write any decisions or? We have to? Pardon me? We can provide a template if you want to have your own decision written for us to approve. If you don't have that capability, we would do it. Okay, we'll write it for you. Okay, now we're moving to our new applications, which there are four tonight. The first is the petition of Arba and Heather Driscoll seeking a special permit under one point eight and two point three point one to convert a two family into a multifamily. And a special permit one point ten and four point one point two, a lesser number of off-street parking spaces in variance one point seven and three point two point one for front and side yard setback at Eight Angle Street. Attorney Favazza.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions at one twenty three Main Street in Gloucester. I'm gonna share my screen real quickly. Here on behalf of Bart and Heather, they are here tonight at the back table. And as the chair announced, we're looking for permitting to allow the conversion of an existing two into a three-family structure with no exterior changes. So a lot of the relief is because we're changing use and that's gonna So, a lot of the relief is because we're changing use, and that's gonna wipe out some protections. So, to start off, we are in the R five district, that is the high-density residential district. It's on the corner of Middle Street and Angle Street. The structure's non-conforming, but the lot is conforming. So, we're asking for dimensional relief, not because the footprint's changing one bit, but because we're going from a two-family to a three-family, and wiping out the pre-existing non-conforming status. So, these variances would be to allow the building to exist as it has, where it is. We're also asking for relief from the parking requirements, not because we can't provide the number of spaces required, but because we can't provide the technical requirements of these spaces, and I'll get into that in a moment. Per usual, I have all the plans loaded up, in case anyone has specific questions relating to the house itself. There's the GIS. There is the satellite, a closer shot of the house. And so, this was the old VNA house, for, I don't know if this will recall, but this is, until recently, had a commercial use on it. So, for the use, we need to go through the one point eight point three, which is now a seven-factor test. As many new housing units do, this will serve a social, economic, or community need by one, creating a unit of housing downtown. It also will help an existing tenant, who is in the small second unit now, move into a better unit to better suit her, and then they'll backfill the vacating unit with a new tenant. For traffic flow and safety, we're downtown. This is not gonna generate an appreciable amount of new traffic in the downtown. And we'll talk about the parking in a moment. Accessory utilities, again, this is dense infrastructure downtown. This one unit's not gonna make a blip on the infrastructure downtown. Neighborhood character, there are a bunch of multis, twos, threes, fours, and more. I think the building down near Yella has, like, twenty units in it, right? There are condos with six units in it. This is a very densely populated part of the high-density area. So, going to a three, probably makes this a more conforming, or more fitting-in type structure than this two-family that it is currently. Natural environment, there's no changes to the site, although I will say that since Bart and Heather took over the property, the garden areas that they have have actually been greatly improved. They've already made the qualities of the natural environment considerably better, since they've taken on, but there'll be no change beyond the improvements that are already done. And fiscal impact, this is that typical win-win. The city gets to ding them for another unit to tax them on. They get another unit they can try and collect rent from, to help keep up with the house. And, there's no federally recognized vulnerability to flooding. They are very close to the boulevard, but they are probably, you know, twenty-plus feet up from the boulevard. So, here is the issue with the parking. So, we can show you very easily, on a piece of paper, that you can get three nine-by-eighteen spaces, and it's a one-to-one ratio per dwelling unit in the R five. Every unit, you need a parking space. The problem is that, when the city council updated the ordinance, as you recall, you guys used to only be able to handle ones and twos. And the city recognized that threes, especially in the R five, need to be easier to come by, so they took it, you know, and I applaud the city council, whenever they take something out of their jurisdiction and give it to a specialized board, they took three families out of their jurisdiction, gave it to the zoning board, made the test easier. They aligned all of the dimensional requirements, so a one, a two, and a three have the same setbacks. And the piece that got missed was, they didn't change the parking ordinance. And so, it's still, if you go through section four, one, when you get beyond two units, all of a sudden, the parking lot requirements show up, and drive aisle widths become a problem, and all this sort of stuff, right? So, although we can get three, you know, conforming spaces, we can't get a twenty-four-foot-wide drive aisle put in, and we can't get, you know, the proper screening and that sort of stuff, right? And I will point out also, that in reality, four cars fit in this lot, and that's a pretty recent picture, you say, one of the, in the two tandem spaces, where you can get the fourth car, one of those is a Chevy Tahoe, so this is not a small vehicle. And all four of those cars are off the street. And they have one more additional, like, emergency parking area. They can't use the driveway, because it's on the corner of Angle and Middle, and Mike Hill doesn't want a curb cut there. But again, like, in a snow emergency, there's room for even a fifth car pragmatically, right? It just can't be used every day. But, as you can see, four cars reasonably fit in the existing driveway, where three are required. Again, it's just not conforming to the technical requirements. So, you have to make sure that by letting this parking requirements be excused, we're not violating the intent of the GZO. And again, the intent is to provide safe, reasonable parking, and this does that. And then we have dimensional variances. We have the one point seven standards, so we need to show that literal enforcement would be a substantial hardship. There's no way to deal with this building in its current orientation and comply with the dimensional setbacks. And again, that relates to that really funky shape of the lot. It's a kind of a crazy little emerald shape. And, we are trying to accommodate uses that have been signaled as being encouraged in this area. So, to pin this thing as a forever-two family, because the house a hundred-plus years ago was built a little too close to the property line, even though we're not changing that exterior wall, I think would in itself be counter to what the zoning ordinance is asking for. So, I don't think there'll be any detriment to the public good, or nullifying the intent of the zoning ordinance, if the variances are granted. And then we have neighborhood support. The, Driscolls went around and spoke informally to a lot of the neighbors, didn't receive any negative feedback. I was able, so, full disclosure, the star at the top, it's actually my house. I'm the direct abutter across the street. I look out at this house every day, and I'm very appreciative of the good job they've done with it so far. And the other two stars are the immediate, immediate abutters on Angle Street and Western Ave. That's one Western Ave, which is the Orlando and Associates Building. It's kind of an L shape. And then, it's Eight Angle Street, which is also owned by the Orlando family. And I've spoken to Joe Orlando personally, and again, it's very similar. Can't speak highly enough about what Heather and Bart have done to the property, and absolutely have no issue with them adding a third unit. So again, the list of relief we need is a use special permit, to go to a three-family, a special permit for parking, just to excuse us from the technical requirements of the layout of the parking area, and then dimensional variances from the front and side yard setback requirements. It's three point four in the front yard, five feet in the right side yard, to allow the building to remain in its current configuration, exterior-wise, so that they can change the use from a two to a three. At that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any immediate questions?
I have one question. So, is it a variance from the parking design that you're looking for?
So, the parking ordinance says that you can waive them by special permit.
Okay.
We put it in the variance table, because there's a slot for it, but four-one calls it a special permit for relief from the parking.
Okay, will anyone in the audience, or online, wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? Please come forward, or raise your hand. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Seeing none, there'll be, no, close the public testimony, be no need for rebuttal. Question? I would, I would just say, it's certainly what we're seeing more and more, and this house is huge, and it should be a three-family. I mean, we have these buildings without having to build new, and take away forest, you know, to be able to add another unit and build into this size, I certainly think makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I agree. I might, I, one, I live in the neighborhood too, and I think you've done a wonderful job with the house over the years. I think you were on the garden tour last year, right? Yeah, I would send you back. Yeah, it looks really good. And, I agree with Joe. I think this house is amply large enough to do three units. The parking is always my concern, when you're going from, you know, two to three or more. So, I think that the parking is adequate there, certainly. And, you know, the variance requested are just a result of losing your non-conforming protections for going, changing the use. So, no change, really, on the building, and I think social, you know, I think you meet the six factors. Certainly, there's adequate utilities. Certainly, it, you know, meets some social desires of creating more housing. So, I'm, I think it's a nice project. I'm gonna support it.
I wholeheartedly support this type of development.
You know, for me? Okay, we will entertain a motion on this application.
I would like to move that we approve a special permit, one point eight and two point three point one, on the request of Ar Bart and Heather Driscoll, Driscoll, to convert a two-family into a multifamily. And a special permit, one point one zero and four point one point two, relief for the lesser number of off-street parking spaces, and a variance, one point seven, three point two point one, front and side yard setbacks at Eight Angle Street.
Second on all three.
Motion's made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Mr., can we just amend the motion a little bit? It's actually a special permit from the design standards. There's, they have the required parking spaces.
Yes.
Second, as amended.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Lipte?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, on the two special permits and the variances.
Mr. Prezy?
Else vote yes? You've heard our decision's favorable? Okay, our next hearing is the petition of Jane and William Dobson, seeking a special permit under one point ten, three point one point six, for height relief on accessory structure, and a variance, one point seven and three point two point one, for side yard setback, to construct a detached garage at fourteen Becker Circle.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, my name's Jane Fox. My husband's here, William Dobson. This is our first time applying for this. We're hoping to have a garage. We initially wanted a twenty-four by twenty, but unfortunately, due to the variances and our setbacks, we brought it down to a, you know, proposal of a twenty to a sixteen-foot. And it does have a, we do need a variance on the side lot of thirteen feet. On the right side. Other than that, we meet all the setbacks, as well as we own the lot that abuts this property. So, our initial, our fourteen Becker Circle, actually, the house alone only takes up eleven point seven percent of the entire lot, and this sixteen-by-twenty proposal only increases it to fourteen point three. Then we also own fourteen R, so we have a total of a half acre. We did have a shed there at one point, but it really got dilapidated, and it was really unsafe, so I tore it down. And my neighbors that own to the right of me has no problems with us. He initially was gonna sell us that small section, then he decided, no, but go for a variance, and I'm not gonna bother, you know?
The section being where the boat is, is that what you mean?
Uh-huh. Right, but the fence is my, like, about there is the property line.
I can see that he pretty much uses the elevated section of his lot, and it looks like the lower section of his lot is where the boat is, correct?
Correct, and it's actually a rental. He converted it from a single family to a two-family, and he does not live there. He rents it out. So, it's also, not only just the variance on the side lot, but I also had a special permit for height. Only I put it at fifteen, figuring, you know, the pitch for the snow, if we needed it, I would go higher, plus it would help, from their porch, looking down a little bit, add a little bit privacy, because we tend to go to the other side, because that's just so exposed, so we have no privacy on that side.
So, you're gonna build fifteen-foot tall on the garage?
Maximum, yes.
Okay. Great. Anything else? Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward.
Good evening, my name's Chris Carey of Twelve Becker Circle. I'm a direct abutter to them, and my wife and I are in full support of what they are trying to achieve. It's something that's very to, get a lot of their stuff off the property that's exposed to weather, and motorcycle tools, those, those such things. I think that's cut out for a second. So, we're in agreement, we don't see any problems with it, and we'd like to see them get this.
Thank you, coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Dobson, I live at fourteen. Tired of-
Yeah, nice and loud, right in that mic.
And I'm tired of repairing rusty tools and stuff that, spending more money in fixing things, because I don't have a garage to put all the stuff in that would work very good, you know?
Great, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Hearing none, we'll close public testimony. Question? Great, forward? Yeah, it's only small.
Yeah, this seems like a reasonable request, and the drawing shows that it's fifty, about fifty feet to the neighbor's building, not encroaching.
Okay, I agree.
So, is it the same standard?
Well, twelve-foot on accessory.
I was just wondering if the standard was the same for a height relief. It's really a variance, isn't it, for height? Because our special permits for height talk about being thirty to thirty-five feet.
Right, but if it met the setbacks, it would have the same relief as the home, the thirty feet. So, I think the fact that it doesn't meet the setback, and there's a variance, we have to look at above twelve. Now, I don't know. You can consider those things, I'm sure.
Okay. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion. On the petition of Jane and William Dobson, speaking a special permit for height relief on an accessory structure, to allow them to build up to a fifteen-foot-high garage, and a variance for the side yard setback, so that you can construct a detached sixteen-by-twenty-foot garage, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna vote in favor of the relief requested. I think that it's a modest proposal, it's a reasonable use of your property, and I don't think the extra height of your garage is going to overshadow anybody, or block their views, or, and I think the location of your existing garage dictates, of your existing driveway dictates where your garage is gonna go, so it's why you're over on the side. So, I move approval of those relief requested.
Second on both of those.
So, we have a motion made and seconded for special permit in variance. Roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Lipte?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes. You've heard our decision's favorable. We will create a draft decision, and that'll get out to you at some point, and it'll have instructions on what to do, to go forward.
Thank you. Okay, next hearing is the petition of Martin and Cheryl Nally, seeking a special permit under one point nine, to alter and expand a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home, in a variance, one point seven and three point two point one, front and side yard setbacks, and distance from accessory building to the street, to construct a pool cabana at twenty rear Edgemore Road. You have the floor.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Marty Nally. My wife's Cheryl back there. And my architect, Benjamin Soling. I live at twenty R Edgemore Road. Kind of new to the neighborhood, bought it last year, and looking-
Spot down there.
What's that?
You have a beautiful spot down there.
Thank you, it is. I feel the luckiest person in the world. But Benjamin did a beautiful rendering of what we'd like, which is, and if you don't mind if he could speak.
My name's Ben Soling, from Soling &amp; Co. Architecture. My address is eleven Strawberry Hill in Brettleboro, Vermont. As you mentioned, this is a beautiful property. It's also really unusual property, and it's an irregularly shaped lot. So, we are seeking a variance to relieve, for relief of the setbacks on the lot, which sits at the end of- which sits at the end of a dead-end street that was previously part of the Powers Mansion, also known as East Wind, which was built in 1900. And this property has a cottage that was built in 1930 that Marty and Cheryl now live in. And they want to, you know, make sure that this property continues to be fully maintained, and they want to do some updating and this addition. There is extremely limited visibility to the neighbors. That's one of the appeals of the property for Marty and Cheryl, and it's one of the things that will be maintained in this design. As we start to look into the code and understand what we're working with here, because of the shape of the lot, once you apply the setbacks, only 13% of the lot would be buildable out of 25% that is allowable under the code. And we are only requesting a lot coverage of 14.8%. The one-story addition would be 60 feet from the closest property line at the front of the property, because the street, that Edgemore, will never be completed because there are wetlands that would prevent the completion of that further down the road. So that also creates an unusual condition. And we are also seeking to improve the condition of that dead-end to provide a turnaround for easier access out of that dead-end. The addition would be below 24 feet tall, which is lower than the existing cottage. And the concept was that we... You know, we want it to fit into the neighborhood, it's such a special neighborhood. So the concept is that it is seemingly a carriage house that would have belonged to the original property. And so it fits in with the scale and with the use. And then in the back, we are proposing a pool that's well within the setbacks and a small pool cabana that just barely would set over the setback. That would go from 40 feet to 38 feet, too. But again, the closest property line across the street from that would be 78 feet away. In the back of the property, we are compliant with all the existing setbacks. I'd also like to note that the existing cottage or bungalow is already non-conforming and is currently 17 feet 3 inches from the front property line. So we are also removing some existing decking that's in the front of the house to improve the look of the front, and replace the front door with a bay window. And then the new addition would be further back. It would be 20 feet from the property line, so that's what we've got.
So clarify the... Trying to figure out where the 15... The 10-foot is?
Which 10 feet?
You're talking front yard setback.
Right.
Proposing 10 feet, where is that to?
So, no, nothing would be 10 feet. We're requesting 20-foot setback off of what's called Stewart Avenue. I don't think anybody uses that name, since the property address is 20R Edgemore. So we're... Technically, that setback would be 40 feet. The road itself that doesn't exist is 40 feet wide. So we want to be 20 feet back from that, giving us 60 feet from the neighboring property.
Well, let's stick to the... I don't care how far away something else is. Let's stick to the property. Where are you asking for this relief from the 20-foot required front yard setback?
The required front yard setback is actually 40 feet, I believe.
All right, one second.
No problem.
Different shot on this.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
So you have... So you're showing your proposed rotary and proposed parking in Stewart Avenue?
Right, it's already that way. There's just a sort of undefined... There's asphalt that just sort of terminates there. So we're just cleaning that up so that it's an easier...
Right, but you don't have any right to park or create a rotary on Stewart Avenue, right? That's not part of your property.
Well, it's... So half of it is actually on the property, and then half of it is just a termination of Stewart Avenue. So half of that is actually on the property, so...
Yeah, I just think we're gonna need you to show us parking on the property, right? I know that there may be customer use for that area, but we can't approve plan that has parking on a public way.
So actually, I think the half of the roundabout that's on the property would actually accommodate the required parking. So do you need us to... What more would you need for that?
Yeah.
I was trying to get at the 18 feet from the cabana room, I guess you're calling it, is to... What are we calling that?
You know, I think that's an error because that's merely going to a landscape line. I'm sorry, that should have gone all the way to the property line, which is significantly further.
So it's not a request for anything there?
No, that... We are compliant on that side of the property. I apologize for that.
And so you talk about a cabana room, but on your drawing, it's an ADU.
Yes, it could be used as an ADU.
Well, if it was gonna be used as an ADU, wouldn't we have to hear it?
You'd need to approve it that way, all right. Is that... That would be great, if... Right, that would be your preference? Yeah, same.
Right, so we're approving location of the building? Well, he's asking for the...
Oh, and the low... Oh.
Asking to build the building, and he may...
Can you guys, at some point, tell me what you're talking about?
I'm gonna... Oh, I'm sorry, Michael.
You can talk among yourselves, as long as you tell me what the conclusion is.
Well, the... We were just pointing out that the pool cabana has ADU on it, right? So you can have an ADU on your property, but if this is granted with a variance, if they wanted an ADU, they would have to come back, because it's not a complying ADU, because it doesn't meet the setbacks, so...
Well, it does or doesn't. The variance for it is only because of the distance between...
Yes, 18 inches.
Before we go too far here, I don't understand why they need a variance. I don't understand why the main house needs variance. It does not.
Oh, I don't either.
Yeah, because the main house is 17-3 from Stewart...
It's already in the setback.
It's already in the setback.
Yeah.
So...
It's non-conforming.
So I think the talk about altering the variance is moot, because there is no variance.
It's just a special permit.
Special permit.
But on the... On the cabana building...
I got a clarification on that. So Stewart Avenue, even though it's a paper road, is a frontage. That's a 40-yard setback. So the new addition needs the variance.
The house is already 2 foot 9 inches closer than the addition. The existing house is already 2 foot 9 inches closer than the addition. So they're just extending an existing non-conforming.
This is a front, too, because it's the corner lot.
What am I missing? Sorry. Oh, so the variance is not from the... I guess I would call it sort of the top parallel. You're saying it's from...
Well, yeah, so Rob is...
The line, is that what you're saying?
It's the Stewart Road, the boundary line is... Requires a 40-foot setback. And the... So the application... Yeah, if we're altering, expanding, and non-conforming, then why would we need the variance?
You're already in it, and you're not extending any further.
The variance for the cabana building is only 38 foot 2. It needs to be 40. So that's one of the variances on the list.
Okay, it's just not really clear. accessory, I don't think it's clear. It's because it's talking about a single-family home, not the cabana there, so...
And the right side, 30... Okay. We'll see if we can clear it up as we go. Questions of the applicant at this time? Thank you. You can step back. The... Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? Please come up or raise your hand if you're on a device. Anyone in favor? Anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward or raise your hand.
Nobody at home listens to me at all, so I'm kind of... Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Marcy Richmond. I'm the sole owner of a single-family home, one-bedroom home at 17 Hillside Road. And I'm the butter closest with the clearest view of the property and the most directly impacted by the proposed construction. So, yeah, if you look at their plan...
You'll have... Unfortunately, you have to stay in the mic, or no one will be able to hear you.
There's property line on the very north... On the very upside, it says property line of 17 Hillside at the very top of their... Okay. And so my house is beyond that in my property, and that's the backyard. And so the proposed addition would be right along... Would be sort of parallel to where my house is. I did submit previously a letter of concern or opposition, which I...
Say right in that mic.
Okay, sorry, okay. I have some procedural and substantive concerns about the application and the paper road, proposed paper road build-out, the petition. The petition is not signed, or at least the plan that I got... The application that I got wasn't signed. More concerning even than that is the fact that there's no surveyor stamp by any local surveyor, and we're dealing with a lot of parcels of land that are registered land, and the paper road issue is a relatively complicated situation. It's not clear to me that what we're reviewing, particularly as it pertains to the proposed road build-out, this so-called rotary, that it's really how it is on the ground. I have a plan that was... That's on record on the registered land side that shows not only Stewart Road, but Gardner Avenue. I don't see that on the plan. I'm concerned that nobody's really looked at in any detail the registered land deeds, along with these paper roads. And I don't... I don't think that it benefits, in fact, I think it's detrimental to the neighborhood to conceive of a rotary there. I just... The parking has been fine for the 40-plus years that I owned the property. There was really no need to enlarge things. So... And also, I'm concerned about who has a right to pass on those paper roads and whether that right would be adversely affected by this proposal. Overall, what... It also concerns me that the petitioner's proposed to essentially double the size of an already non-conforming property here. They're not adding a room here or there or changing something small. They claim that the area usage would only increase by 1.8%, even though they're essentially doubling the footprint of the existing structure with what they propose to build. And I'm not a mathematician, but unless they're adding in the area in the paper road to calculate the lot area, or this incremental change in the lot area that they're suggesting, I don't think the math can be correct at all. I think they must be using that area of the paper road as their own to make that calculation. Going back for a minute to the application itself, it was unsigned. There was no surveyor's stamp on the plan. And when it talks about in Part D, the current use of the property, they say one family, but as to the proposed use, that's not filled out at all. The large-size proposed structure will really dwarf the one-bedroom home that I have. I'm really in large part the neighborhood, maybe, or at least most of the neighborhood to this house, since it's so secluded. I'm concerned that there may be significant shadowing and deprivation of sunlight. There'll be more people, more noise, more traffic, all impacting the quiet setting of the property. The petitioners are seeking a variance and a special permit, and they claim that there's hardship connected to the land, but I respectfully suggest that there is not. There are... They refer on the plan to their home being uncompleted because of these issues with the land, but I don't believe that the home has been incomplete. And I don't need to tell this board, because you all know much better than I do, that there's a high standard required for granting of a variance, and it should only be granted sparingly. And since they're seeking to double the size of their living, including adding a second kitchen and mudroom and family room on their already non-conforming situation, this, to me, is not a precedent that would bode well here. I don't... This is not a situation... I don't, this is not a situation where they can't build if they don't get a variance or they, you know, they can't build a single-family home. I didn't hear from my neighbor about this. The first notice I got was just around the holiday from the zoning board. That is all I heard about this. But the proposed rotary is disturbing to me. Another, another issue is that there was no butters list. I talked to the building commissioner's office. I think that a butters list was provided to the petitioners, but they never attached it. And I tried to get one today, and I think I was given one, but I can't find it for some reason now. But the other thing I noted is that the application, I have now one copy of the application that was, that I got on the website. Excuse me, and the dimensional requirements, that that version, which is page five, are different. There's a markup on those, on those, on those dimensions in the version that I got from the, from the. So I just point out that there are some, so one online says forty-foot forty-foot requirement, and then it says zero feet, but this one is marked up to twenty feet. So I'm not really sure. Very hard to, a lot of detail on this plan, but there's no, there are no stakes in the ground that I know of. I don't, I don't know if the board has been out there to see what's being proposed. But I would suggest that Rear Edgemont Road only has three houses. We don't need to expand parking and turnarounds to make it into something that it has never been and really is, it wasn't intended to be.
I could clarify a couple of things with you.
Sure.
Some of them, I don't know if I heard it right, but one thing, we're only dealing with activity on the property. The rotary is outside of our interest and our ability to control. That would be something with the Department of Public Works road situation. So we're basically just focused on the buildings. You mentioned about the percentage, and I don't know, so the lot's twenty-four eight. The original house is, with the shed, is fifteen hundred and seventy-six. And they're proposing to add an addition that will take us up to only two thousand eighty-five square feet for a lot coverage of fourteen point eight percent. So it's significantly below the lot coverage requirements. Anything else?
I'm not sure, how do you double the size and double the footprint and get such a small percentage increase?
Well, the lot coverage was eight point four, and the new proposed is fourteen point eight. That's six point four percent.
I thought, I thought it was.
This may help explain the calculation?
They're well within their twenty-five percent. They're almost half of the twenty-five percent.
Well, the increase in what they're proposing, the increase is almost as much as the original non-conforming structure.
I think that's correct.
They're allowed to go up to twenty-five percent coverage, and they're only asking to go up to fourteen point eight percent coverage. The lot coverage is not even before us as a request for a variance. Again, we'll be focusing on just the addition sink and the accessory building for the pool cabana. Those are, we have jurisdiction over.
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close public testimony. If the applicant has the right to rebuttal of anything that was proposed or a question?
Yes, thank you. I think you cleared up the lot coverage issue, and I believe we're currently at six point four percent. And we're, so we are still well within what's allowed. No shadow would be cast on the, the, the other property that was in question. That's, I mean, it's over sixty feet away, and our building is only twenty-four feet tall. So, and I think we're familiar with that property. Didn't you try to rent that house?
I tried to rent it. She lives in New Hampshire.
That's, that's not relevant.
Okay, but no, so we're familiar with this property because when we were, when we were studying the site plan, we wanted to make sure that we were maintaining the privacy that the property has, which is why Martin and Cheryl. Yeah, that's why, that's why Martin and Cheryl bought this property, and they will maintain all of the screening. And we did submit a stamped survey from Gateway Consultants, actually, with the application. And that's all we have to offer. Do you have any questions for us before?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
It might be, yeah, it might be few, but it might just be internal here. Except I still feel like I'm blowing a trumpet over here on the variance. I think I just want to, I'm not trying to get us out of a variance if we need it. I think I just want to understand what's being asked. So it looks to me like Stewart Ave, sort of moving toward the Hillside Road property, it looks like that does not need a variance, that that is just a continuation, intensification of the non-conformity that already exists with sort of the little pointed edge of the house at seventeen foot three. But do, does it need a variance as it turns the corner, moving toward twenty-two Edgemont Road? That where they need, because it looks like there's a second, I'm not sure what we're calling front and right here. I'm not sure quite what's being called out.
It's a corner lot, so I believe that they're both counted as front, unfortunately.
So is that why the variance is needed?
I think it's just that one foot eight, I mean, ten. So with Stewart Ave on the other bend. Because you've got kind of an odd situation where you have three frontages, really. Thirty-eight foot two-one, is that what you missed?
More than twenty feet.
So my, no, but my question to you then is, what is this right, so in the table that was created, okay? Just one second, just one second. What's the thirty-three feet proposed on the right side? What, where am I seeing that dimension on this lot plan?
The thirty-three feet, sorry, on the right side?
That's what it says.
Can I ask the building commissioner if he would help clarify, as this was reviewed to create the application? Robert, can you help us at all with that?
So if we grant you anything, I want to make, I mean, I'm not promising that we will, but I want to make sure that we grant what you need.
Yes, thank you, understood.
Not get you in trouble later on.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, it seems like the table is a little mixed up with the distance from accessory building, oh, to the street. Yeah, it needs to be forty feet, and it's thirty-eight two. That's one of the variances. Right yard setback. How about the front, the front yard is pre-existing. So I would say the only variance we're issuing is for here. For the pool? Gotcha, right. Michael, the, so the clarification is the sixteen foot six from the pool, which is also an accessory structure, creates the side yard variance. And I don't think we need the front yard variance because, as you commented.
Special permit.
It's, it's just a special permit. So alter and expand is non-conforming, is going to cover the front. The distance from the accessory building to the frontage is a little bit short, foot and ten. And then the, I don't know, what do we call it? The side yard setback of sixteen foot six needs a variance. Pool.
I believe the rear setback of fifteen feet, we're actually within the, we don't need a variance for that sixteen-six because we're only required to have fifteen feet from the rear setback for the pool.
Well, what do you call on the rear?
Exactly, so it's the, so basically, the northeast and the northwest property lines at the top are front. And so then you have sides, and then opposite that, you'd have rear. And it's that irregular line.
So if I'm following this, the only thing we need is the special permit for the distance from accessory building to the street, which is forty feet required, and they have thirty-eight feet, foot two inches. So if, other than a special permit to alter and expand, Michael, I always think that's the only.
That's the only variance they need.
Variance we need.
Agree with that or not?
I think it's me. No, I agree with the analysis about the variances and the setbacks. I just want to raise the issue again about proposed parking in Stewart Way. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable approving a plan that has proposed parking on a public way.
Could we just condition our, if we do approve, could we just condition our approval that we are rejecting?
The rotary and the proposed parking and all.
Rejecting, yeah, any proposed parking outside of the lot itself, yeah?
Yeah, I would be fine with that. I just want to make it clear, we're not approving parking, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, we're happy to update the landscape plan to.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry to ask the same a question again.
That's okay.
So we are only talking about a variance to get the thirty-eight point two and the forty feet for the pool block.
Yes.
The cabana.
We would, we would agree with your interpretation.
Are you sure you want to get a variance over that small an issue? You couldn't move the building? It isn't there?
Correct, I think if that were the case, we would like some sort of indication that you've reviewed this. It's a very complicated, it's an unusual lot shape. So we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, checking everything with all the right people. If, if that was your determination and there was some record of that, we would, I think we could accommodate that. We could pull it within.
With, all right, you guys can sit, you guys can sit back down, thank you. What's before us?
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Would it make sense to withdraw the application if you determine we don't need a variance? Okay, thank you.
I mean, I'm not speaking for anybody, but, right. So no matter what we do, there needs to be a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure. That's definitely before us under one point nine. The variance is for the accessory building, which is required to be forty feet from the street, the frontage on Stewart Ave. And it's, and he's only asking for thirty-eight two. So we're talking about a variance for one foot, ten inches. For that also. I mean, would, the way the pool has to be from the building, I mean, I, yeah, could he, could he make the accessory building smaller and pull it back? To get to, I mean, obviously, he's not going to clip the corner. He'd have to take us another four to six feet off the building, so. But I don't think it's a hurdle they can't meet. So minimal, do you have a problem with it?
I don't have a problem with it, no.
Right, we want to make sure the parking is not, they're not allowed to just go and start taking over public property. So that's not going to be in this, and there will be a condition on that. So with that being said, are we, Catherine going to make a motion?
Thank you.
Why don't we condition it on the plan, or re-submit it of the plot plan without?
On the petition of Martin and Cheryl Nally, seeking a special permit to alter, expand a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home and a variance for an accessory structure distance to enable them to construct a cabana at the pool. I would move approval of the special permit, and I would move approval of the variance on the condition that a new plan be submitted that removes this proposed parking and this rotary in Stewart Avenue and shows the parking code.
Because we're going to have to stamp a plan that goes along with the decision, and I won't do it without, with anything on it that kind of infers that we're going to okay something, so. So we'll vote on it tonight, but then the decision will be subject to obtaining an updated plot plan as a condition. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, so I would second for the special permit and for what I would consider the minimus variance. I just want to comment, I think that it is increasing the non-conformity of the existing house. I don't think it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I always want to be, find the right word, compassionate to neighbors or whatever. But I walked the entire property, I didn't meet you, I said hello probably to your wife, I think, yeah, she was just sitting. I walked the entire property looking for the house. I couldn't find it. I literally couldn't find it. I spent about ten minutes walking the property line, trying to find your house through the trees, and I couldn't see it. That's enough for me, that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
So we have a motion on the floor and seconded to approve a special permit to alter and expand and a variance for the front yard setback to the accessory building to the street. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Luchte?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, for both.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, and just to be clear, that's with the condition that Catherine said. My, my second was for that condition as well, yes.
Mr. Percy?
I also vote in favor. We will render a decision once we receive an updated plot plan reflecting that. All set, thank you. Okay, our last hearing this evening is the application, petition of Jack and Andra Shapiro, seeking variance. seeking variance under 1.7, 3.2.1 for side yard setbacks to construct an addition to the main structure.
How beautiful.
And a special permit under 2.4.3 and 3.2.1 to allow for less distance between primary structure and existing accessory building at 247 Atlantic Road.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions here in Gloucester, at the address of 123 Main Street. I am going to share my screen. I'm here tonight on behalf of Andrea and Jack Shapiro and I am joined by Jonathan Poor of Poor &amp; Company, the design firm that put together the plans for this renovation. We're at 247 Atlantic Road out on the back shore. So the proposed work is to add an addition to the left side of the existing house, which will allow for the reconfiguration of an existing garage and create a basic, a single level living area so that the owners are able to age in place and as mobility issues arise, they'll be able to get from garage directly into living quarters without any impediment. So we are in the R20, so the low, medium density residential district. This is a conforming, single-family principal structure and there is a nonconforming accessory structure. And the nonconformity there is it's too close to the principal structure. It should be 20 feet away, I think it's 16 feet away. The lot is also conforming and the current owner has purchased it back in 2021 and this has kind of been the culmination of a long, a long dream of Jack. He grew up spending summers here, his father was an artist. And actually, part of the upper level for this renovation is going to be storage of a collection of works that were done in part by Jack's father. So we need a variance because when you aren't violating a setback, you have a higher threshold to do kind of simple things than if they'd already been in the setback, right? And so we also need a special permit to alter and expand. Again, that's because the existing nonconformity of the distance is getting shorter. So I have all the plans loaded up per usual. If anyone has any questions, we can go back to this. This is a nice little rendering. So you see everything in red generally is the addition and the darker red is the portion that's going over that setback line into the side yard setback area. So the majority of the addition is within the building envelope, there's just a portion that is outside of that. And here again are all the redesigned footprints with the area shown, the darker red being where it exceeds the allowable setback. And this is the exterior elevation shots, again, everything in red would be addition being added on. And so there's some good renderings here, you see the existing versus the proposed. The driveway, as you can see, is getting narrower and shorter and we'll go into that in a moment. This is the GIS data, this is the satellite photography. You can see that the immediate butters, there's one undersized vacant lot at the corner and then one conforming lot that is also vacant. And then you see the neighbors to the right are very similar. These are long, narrow lots that have houses instead of running with the long narrowness, run perpendicular to the long narrowness and go side to side. So again, this is the existing driveway. What I want to point out about this driveway, one of the impetus is for the redesign, is you can see in the back, you can see the existing two-car garage and it's at a 90-degree angle. And so what happens right now is you drive in, you can see on the left-hand side, there's a little bit of a retaining wall and there's a little bit of space between the property line and the driveway. Then as you get closer to the back, as you get toward the garage, the driveway has to basically go all the way to the property line and then you have to make a really painful 90-degree turn. And honestly, larger vehicles like even something like an F-150 doesn't make that turn. And so we're not sure, certainly wasn't Jonathan who designed this setup, we're not sure who did, but it's non-functional basically. And so if you look at this plan, everything that is in green is currently driveway and as you see, gets real close to that property line. Everything in green is currently driveway and will become landscaped, vegetated area. So I would submit that as far as those neighbors to the left, which are currently vacant lots, would be concerned, the feel of this is actually going to create more separation. The building will be physically closer to that property line, there'll be this increased separation of vegetation where right now the intensity of use is right up to that line because you have to hug it to try and swing into that garage as it is. So if the building gets closer, I think the feel of it will be of pushing away. And so we have to get the 1.7 standards out there and just find a hardship. So obviously, this has been a longstanding dream. They were able to find a house that was for sale out on Atlantic Road, awesome. Unfortunately, the interior requires renovation to continue to, you know, realize that dream. Little enforcement would require demolishing much more of the existing house, it would be a much larger project and it would probably be a lesser result. And so we're trying to instead work with the building that is there, not, you know, waste existing sections that, you know, otherwise don't need to come down. And if you take that hardship, you tie it to the shape or topography of the lot, again, this is a narrow lot where it, like several of the neighbors, have houses that were built perpendicular to the orientation of the lot. And obviously, given where it is, you can understand why they would want to get as much looking out toward Atlantic Road as they can. So it makes sense, but it is a sort of a unique thing. You would think in a vacuum, you'd look at the lot and go, oh, we just rotate the house 90 degrees. But given the peculiar area or the particular area in which it's in, that is why the house is oriented as it is. And again, that creates this existing access difficulty with the existing garage, et cetera. And so you go, okay, well, if we, you know, eliminate this really, you know, kind of non-functional design and let you get a little too close to the property line, are you going to be derogating from the intent of the ordinance? Are you going to be harming the public good? And again, you know, I'd say no, because this becomes a much more functional space. As you can see, if I flip back and forth between the existing and the proposed, again, although the building is getting closer to that left side property line, it's been cleverly designed to allow for this increase in green space to really increase the physical separation that you'll feel between the properties. And it also, again, prevents or shortens the distance in which cars are driving down, right? This is probably almost a third of the length of the driveway coming off, so cars will spend less time driving down next to the neighboring lot. So those are the standards we have to make. Again, this is the vacant lot I've been discussing. Here are the plans once again, if anyone has any questions. And then the special permit that we need, again, we're supposed to be 20 feet away between the shed. Right now it's 16 feet, after this addition, it'll be 12 feet, so that's an alter and expand relating to the shed. The standard there being, of course, will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. You can't see the shed, you certainly won't see the shed after this addition and all that additional planting, so I can't imagine the neighborhood would be affected at all, let alone substantially to the detriment of the neighborhood. So that being said, we need a dimensional variance for a left side yard setback, 20 feet is required, eight foot six is proposed, which would be an 11 foot six variance, and a special permit to alter and expand. If anyone has any technical questions, Jonathan is here. Otherwise, if there are no technical questions, that's okay also. And I thank you and we'll leave it there.
Next door, you said undersized, unbuildable currently?
There's two. So there's a very small, you know, a couple, I don't know if it's a couple thousand square feet at the very corner that fronts on Atlantic. And then there's a Farrington Ave lot that surrounds that little lot on two sides and also is the majority of the shared property line with this property.
Undersized?
I think the Farrington Avenue is buildable.
Oh, okay, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Any conversation with that neighbor?
They received notice, but I don't think that we heard from them. Again, without speaking for that neighbor, if you look at the topography of that lot, the idea that you would, if you were to build in a lot, you'd be building toward the corner of Farrington, Atlantic anyway. The idea they'd be anywhere near this driveway, I don't think is practical thinking.
Take public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward or raise your hand. Anyone in favor? Hearing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Opposition, come forward or raise your hand on your device. Being none, be no need for rebuttal.
On the one hand, I, I mean, I, I understand the desire to correct that garage and I do think it's, ultimately, it would be a softer edge for that property if you landscape it and now that's living, you know, as opposed to driving space. It is, it is pretty close to the, I mean, it's only nine feet from a lot line with pretty big houses and pretty big lots, so I don't see anybody here opposing it. So you kind of use the neighbors as a, as a kind of a gauge, you're sort of, it doesn't seem to bother them, so. Even as proposed, it's pretty in keeping with all the other houses in that area, you know, its size and it's, it's kind of funny, you had these big lots and all the houses are kind of in the same location. I know it's because of the wetlands and whatnot, but.
Wetlands and they're looking at the ocean.
Yeah, I didn't think Attorney Favazza had mentioned the wetlands, but it's, it's clear on the, on the plot plan that less, probably half the lot is buildable, so it would almost be impractical to turn, pick the building up and turn it without running into that. I can't raise an objection to this. Any others? I agree, I think it's a nicely designed way to utilize the garage a little more sensibly than it was built and I'm sure it was built that way because that's what they had to work with footprint, but yeah, it is, it's 139 feet wide, but it, it's taken up quite a bit by these long sloping houses and looks like, I don't see too much detriment and I like the landscaping. And it's, you know, it's a little bit further, closer than the shed and what was there, but I don't think it's detrimental. Being said, we'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion on the petition of Jack and Andrea Shapiro, seeking variance 1.7 and 3.2.1 for side yard setbacks to construct an addition to the main structure and a special permit 2.4.3 and 3.2.1 to allow for less distance between the primary structure and an existing accessory building at 247 Atlantic Road.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Nyman?
Yes, on the variance, yes, on the special permit.
Ms. Slutte?
Yes, for the relief requested.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, for the relief requested.
Mr. Prese?
Also vote in favor. You've heard our decision's favorable. Appreciate a draft. Anyone have any other business to bring up? Our next hearing is on July 25th.
Will that be here or? Don't know yet. Paul?
City Hall, we'll watch the ads. Anything else we need to cover? Are we good?
Good.
Seeing a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We're all ready.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, roll call, vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Slutte?
Yes.
Mr. Prese?
Yes, we are adjourned.